All right.
All right, I will go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the city council for September 20th, 2021. The first order of business will be invocation and pledge of allegiance, and council member Gardner will be leading us in that.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day, Lord, and we're thankful for the opportunity to come together tonight and do the city's business, Father, and we just ask for wisdom with all the decisions that we make here tonight, and we are thankful that we are in this position to serve this community, Father, and we just ask for wisdom and guidance in all that we do. Thank you so much for all those that work each and every day in our city to take care of our citizens and to protect us, Father, and we just ask for a special measure of grace and mercy on them as they are out serving us each and every day. Thank you so much for all that you do for us in our lives and the blessings that you give us, Lord, in your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, then next order of business is special guests and announcements. I had on here Mayor's Employee of the Month, but we're gonna go ahead and bypass this for this week, and we'll be back at the next meeting with that. Next agenda item is approval of the minutes for September 7th. Y'all have received a copy of those minutes in your council packet. I've got a motion second to approve the regular minutes for September 7th, 2021. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Next order of business is public comment cards. I have one public comment card from someone not on, for an item not on the agenda, so we will cover that now. Mr. Christopher Williams, come on down. If you could please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Christopher Williams, 8 Havenwood Lane, Mammell.
As you will, sir.
All right, I'm a concerned citizen about our police department. I moved here to Mammell about three years ago, and one of the things that impressed me most about this town was the police department. They are probably the nicest, most selfless people that I've ever been around. I've lived all over this country, I've traveled a lot in my life, but one of the things that I've learned about here recently is we lost five officers. We lost these officers because they got better paying jobs in neighboring cities. Out of those five officers, we've replaced one. Now, we're still short four. From what I'm being told, there's five to seven more that have applied with other cities because we're not paying them the salaries competitive to our neighboring cities. A 20-year officer on our force makes less than an eight-year officer on North Little Rock's force. I know that there's been comments made that we're not worried about our veterans that have been here because we don't think they'll go anywhere. They're gonna go somewhere because they can go there and work three to five years and raise their pension. They can go make more money and have a higher pension when they retire. I think it's time that we do something for our officers, you know, our dispatchers. They're doing non-emergency, they're doing emergency, they're taking care of walk-ins. How can they be focused on being able to take care of emergency calls? They can't, and the reason we're shorthanded is nobody wants to come to work here because of the lack of salaries. So that's something that I would hope that our council will take up, something that we will address before we lose our officers, because when we lose our officers, our crime rate's going up, and the first thing I'm doing is selling my house. Yes, somebody's gonna buy it, move in, but I have a family of seven, and we spend our money here in Mammell. We would spend more money in Mammell and create more tax revenue for Mammell if we would also work in Mammell to get us some restaurants besides drive-throughs and places for us to spend our money without going to North Little Rock. We would generate more tax revenue here, which would help pay for some of the things that we need. But I'm not gonna raise my children in a city that's full of high crime because we can't keep our police officers. You know, like I said, right now, we've lost five out of 38, and we've replaced them with one. When we lose five, six, seven more, we're not gonna need, have the officers that we need. So I asked the council, let's look at this and address it. We have good officers, they're hard to come by, and you gotta keep your veterans here to teach your rookies to be the kind of officers that they are and the leaders they are in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
I think one of the things that, one of the best things that our police officers have is a supportive community, so thank you, Mr. Williams, for coming out and showing that support for our police officers. I know we've talked about this, and we talked about it the last council meeting, that some of our staffing issues are a top priority right now. I know that for me and from y'all, that public safety is a top priority for us as well, and I agree that police staffing is an issue. I've brought this up at previous meetings, but also wanted to reiterate that here. It's not just police department staffing, it's also a lot of citywide departments. Public Works, for example, is down 13 employees last I checked. But this isn't a new problem, this isn't a problem that is necessarily new to us right now. When we were doing some research for the premium pay, what we did was look back at what our staffing was in January of last year, January 27th, and we actually have one more police officer employed with us right now than we did at that time. So it's a small improvement, but it's not a big enough improvement. We still, currently we have 18 police officers in the Police Officer One and Police Officer Two category, and we're budgeted for 21 there. And I think it's important with police to recognize that this is not necessarily the most favorable time to be a police officer. Thankfully, our officers live in a community where they have folks like Mr. Williams coming to advocate on their behalf. But nonetheless, just to reiterate, for those that aren't aware, one of the things that we just passed at the most recent council meeting was $1,500 in premium pay for all employees, including police officers. There was a $1,000 retention that'll be applied to all law enforcement officers, and that'll be designed to retain them a little bit longer. And then, of course, we are offering a $2,500 sign-on bonus for law enforcement officers that was approved by this council and using ARPA funds to do that. For those that have been on Facebook and seen our push, we're doing a real big push with law enforcement, with videos, we're really trying to get out there and promote that, not just through the way that we're communicating, but internally, some of the recruiting processes from when people apply on through until they test. We have a fair number apply, but that don't necessarily show up to take the test, so working with some of those folks. And of course, we have started offering Mammell police officers cash incentives if they refer someone to the department that ends up getting employed by the police department. But we do recognize and understand that retention and recruiting is not just about compensation, it's also about creating a good place to work. And I've mentioned the community that I think is a real big issue and a community that comes out in support of their law enforcement officers, knowing that there's a city council and elected officials that support them and have their back is important, too. But it's also things like equipping them and training them. I applaud Chief Pickard's efforts to drastically increase the quality and quantity of the training that the police officers receive recently. For those that on the council know, and some of you out in the audience, that we've invested significantly in updating the patrol fleet so that we don't have officers driving unsafe vehicles and so that we can have the streets fully manned with, or fully staffed with vehicles that function and get people from A to B. And so those are just a couple things. I think it's important to note that even though we had a budget crunch this last year, in every single department in the city that is funded through general fund money saw a decrease in their budgeted operating expenses, that that did not apply to the police department. The police department was the one department that in the budget that I submitted and the budget that y'all approved saw a 6.9% increase in the operating expenses. If they say, you know, put your money where your mouth is, I think we're putting our money where our mouth is in that regard. But that is still not sufficient for, to be able to recruit the best officers we can and retain them. And so I think we're gonna be facing some steep cost increases this year in things like medical insurance, which looks like it may be going up approximately $330,000. HR is working, and we're trying to get that number to not increase by that amount. Jail fees, we've, year after year, kinda get into a battle with the county. It looks like we may be seeing jail fees increase $100,000 to $262,000 next year. We currently pay $70,000 a year, just to, so you can fully understand the magnitude of that. Some of the different cities here in Plaski County are trying to come up with a strategy to keep that fee not increasing to that level. But nonetheless, I think we have one of the best police departments in the state, and I'm proud of our officers, command staff, support staff, and chief of police who I think have been working really hard in this. And I just want them to know they've got our back and that their salaries and making sure that they're compensated appropriately will be one of my top priorities going into the budget session. I just wanted to address that, those factors, as I know there's stuff being talked about up there. So thank you for giving me a moment. With that, we will move on to financial, council member Holt, I'm sorry.
I want to take a second, Mr. Mayor. He is, he called me, he is from Ward 4, and he called me, and we had a long, long conversation about it. He has a family of seven, and he's very concerned about his personal family, but he's also a very strong advocate for the neighborhood in general. So he's all behind us doing whatever we need to do for our officers and for the safety and enjoyment of the city. So I appreciated him coming in and giving us that update. He's made a number of other calls, but people are always busy and they don't get to come, but I'll vote yes for anything we can do.
Thank you, sir. With that, we will move on to financial statement review. Ms. Mathis, you're up.
Good evening. We are taking a look here at our financials at the end of August of this year. Still don't have the year-to-date comparison thing fixed for us. Hopefully, next month's report will have that fixed, and I'll give you a little update on that at the end here. So right now, we're looking at county village tax, year-to-date we're $3,000 ahead of budget. You know, we know that trend of budgets is gonna vary throughout the year. We'll get that next big chunk of money in October. Franchise fees, current year-to-date is $17,000 ahead of budget. State turnback funds are $1,000 ahead of budget year-to-date, and we did receive $32,000 additional distribution from the state in July. So we did get that little catch-up money that we were behind last year and have received that at this point in time. County sales tax, current year-to-date is $566,000 ahead of budget year-to-date. We've continued to see that trend going up over the last several months, which is fantastic. It's amounts for taxes collected on sales in June and collected by the state in July. Our city sales tax, current year-to-date is 102 behind budget year-to-date. So this represents, again, taxes collected on sales in June. So we're seeing the sales in the county, but not quite in the city, it looks like. Police Department, current year-to-date revenue is $27,000 ahead of budget and $39,000 more than the previous year. We did get those LOPI turnback funds in July, and we're gonna start seeing our quarterly PSAP distributions. You'll start to see those show a bigger variance when you're looking at budget year-to-date in these last couple of quarters. So I believe we'll get the next PSAP distribution this month in September. It's usually a little bit lagging the end of the quarter. Fire Department, current year-to-date is $120,000 ahead of budget and $58,000 more than the prior year. Parks and Rec fees, current year-to-date is $1,000 behind budget year-to-date, $85,000 more than the prior year. So they've seen a good upswing to their summer season there. We got some good recovery there. Senior Wellness, current year-to-date is $46,000 behind budget year-to-date, 9,000 more than the prior year. They're continuing to watch that revenue and expense variance, and right now their expenses are $41,000 under budget year-to-date, so they're maintaining that as their revenues are a little bit behind. And then on that miscellaneous income, we saw that $646,000 transfer in July, so that's done for the year. Expenditures in all department except for citywide services remains at or below budget year-to-date. The only reason citywide services is showing over is related to those software expenses, membership fees, and our liability insurance that we pay at the beginning of the year. Overall, expenses are $479,000 under budget year-to-date, $132,000 more than the prior year. And looking at our fund balance, at the end of August, the fund balance was $354,000 over the required minimum balance. Our current year revenues are $1.16 million more than our expenses, so that's part of why our fund balance looks so good right now. We still have some reconciliation work to complete before we can get that more accurate picture of what that fund balance truly is. Looking at our street fund, county village tax, year-to-date $12,000 ahead of budget, and our state turnback funds are $85,000 ahead of budget year-to-date. So street fund is looking good. Both the streets and senior services, transportation remain under budget year-to-date in expenditures, and the current available street fund balance at the end of August was right at 4.8 million. Sanitation fund, current year-to-date's $19,000 ahead of budget year-to-date for those revenues, and their operating expenses are $79,000 under budget, $13,000 less than the prior year. Their personnel expenses are $111,000 under budget and $62,000 more than the prior year. That's one of those areas where your, their personnel is down quite a bit, so they're under budget quite a bit. Current available sanitation fund balance at the end of August was right at 2 million. Our capital improvement fund, I've just left that note on there, balance is now $204,000 after we made that transfer in July. Police and fire fund transfers, we're keeping up with those monthly, and the current year receipts are $95,000 ahead of the budget year-to-date. No movement on our FEMA grant fund in the last month, and then in our COVID relief fund, the same notes on there from the prior month where we received the funds. In September, you'll, on the September report, you'll see more of a P&L kind of thing of what we've spent so far, which at this point in time is only the premium pay that you approved at the last council meeting. So that's it as far as the August financials. To give you a quick update on our past years, the 2018 financial portion of the annual financial report was sent to the auditors last week, the draft of that. So I'm working up on finishing the stats section and the management discussion and analysis section, which are the two non-audited sections of that report. Should have those wrapped up this week. Also, really, so with 2018 kind of starting to come to a close there, we should have a report, cross your fingers, soon. I don't have an exact timeline from the audit firm at this point in time, when they will come talk to you and present that report. But what we're gonna do is, once we kind of wrap 2018, is hop over a little bit and finish reconciling 2020 so that we can close that out and come to where are we at the beginning of this year. We know how we're doing this year so far, but at the beginning of this year, prior to us really digging into that budget cycle, so that we can start to address some of the concerns that the mayor raised. So that's kind of gonna be the next priority, is to get that closed out and pretty much audit-ready as far as what y'all are looking at, so that we're looking at accurate numbers when we start to plan for 2022 and beyond, so.
Thank you. Is there any questions, comments, discussion? Council member Mosley?
Yeah, just wanted to check. At one time, we thought we might get the 2019 year also audited and presented. Is that any chance of that, or are we looking to be on?
Most of the audit work is completed on 19. I have to do the annual financial report for it to finish that one. And so that's why I said we're kinda gonna skip. I'm gonna focus my attention on getting 20 reconciled so that what we're looking at month to month and planning the next year is at least reconciled and accurate to that point. And then we'll turn around and go back, wrap up the annual financial report for 19. I can't, I can't finish it until we've got 18's completed in its entirety anyways. I can't really start the report on it until we officially close out that prior year. But we'll be ready to go with the report and finishing that one, and then hopefully have 20 soon on its heels.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, I entertain a motion to accept the financial report. I'll move. I've got a motion second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Next order of business is the, as a procedural motion, I entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. I've got a motion second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Next order of business is unfinished business, the first, the third reading of ordinance 1037, accepting annexation of land, Pinnacle Heights property, Madam City Clerk Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only.
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1037, an ordinance accepting the annexation of land, commonly known as the Pinnacle Heights property, to be titled the Pinnacle Heights Property Annexation to the City of Mammell, Arkansas, and making the Pinnacle Heights property a part of the City of Mammell and for other purposes.
Thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and open this up to discussion. Really quickly, I just wanted to reiterate and thank the applicant and who's here, and applicant representatives are here as well, for their willingness to meet with the residents in that area and to field a whole lot of questions that I think has gone a long way toward easing some of folks' concerns. So thank you again for doing that. Council member Mazzoni?
Yeah, I want to second that. You know, it was my motion that delayed it, but there were a lot of complaints prior to that, and you guys taking the time, meeting with all the, all the residents really did square them away, and I've not heard a single issue since then, so I appreciate your time on that.
Council member Mosley?
Yeah, I'm gonna be a no vote tonight, but that's, I'm generally not in favor of annexation unless it's for commercial development. So I'm a no vote based on that, basically. Again, I'd also thank the developer for, and the engineering firm for making an effort to visit with the residents and get them comfortable. I did go and talk to the two residents there at the very end of the street that the road would go right between. One of the residents said he had talked to the developer after the meeting and was basically, hopefully resigned to how that all goes. The other resident on the other side had not talked to the developer, I don't think, at that point. And he was, I'd asked if they had contacted him, he said no. And he voiced that he was a little concerned about what would happen to his driveway, and also there's, I guess, supposed to be a dog park that would be right behind his backyard, and he was concerned about that. So thought I'd bring that up in case there's any way to minimize the effects of that for him or relocate it somewhere else possibly. And I'd also mention drainage. I certainly hope you'll do, do a real good job on, your due diligence on drainage to make sure that, that that drainage does not affect the residents down on Breckenridge and Beaver Creek. There's apparently still having drainage problems down there. I told him to call Mr. Grummer, and I told him I had every confidence that he would see that, that current drainage problems are addressed and that any future things would be dealt with. So that's about all I've got on that, other than, I just wanted to, we don't talk about conflict of interest very much here anymore. We used to have a couple of council members that had conflicts of interest because of their relationships to certain departments, but I wanted to just read, read from our section 231 from our Code of Ethics in our code book. It says, "Council members shall refrain from making or influencing decisions involving business associates, customers, clients, competitors, and immediate family members." In other words, if you think you have a good friendship with, with somebody that might gain financially or otherwise from an issue in front of the council, you either need to probably think about recusing or at least visiting with the city attorney to see if maybe you should, or at least reveal that. And so in other words, you just, you need to be kind of aware of that and not be voting or engaging in conversation about a subject if you think you have a conflict. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Council member Gardner?
Motion to approve ordinance 1037.
I've got a motion and a second. Was there any discussion on that motion? Council member Holt?
Mr. Mayor, out of respect for the people who, in that area, who voiced their opinion publicly and to me personally, out of respect for them, they voiced their objections, so I will be voting no. However, I want to, I did what I could to set up the meeting between the developer and the citizens. I congratulate the developers, they certainly did an admirable job for their part. So I did everything that I could do, but out of respect for them, I think I will, I mean, I will be voting no, but I think that the issue is one that probably should go forward. Thank you for your time.
All right. If there's no further discussion, Madam City Clerk Treasurer, roll call vote, please.
Council member Mosley.
No.
Council member Saunders.
Yes.
Council member Mazzoni.
Yes.
Council member Gardner.
Yes.
Council member Williams.
Yes.
Council member Tierney.
Yes.
Council member Shin.
Yes.
Council member Holt.
Motion passes, and we will move on to the next order of business, the third reading of ordinance 1038, amendment to the land use plan and map. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1038, an ordinance amending the Mammell land use plan and map due to annexation and for other purposes.
All right, this is the land use plan for that area that was approved in 1037. I'd entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1038.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Was there any discussion on that motion? Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Council member Holt.
Yes.
Council member Shin.
Yes.
Council member Tierney.
Yes.
Council member Williams.
Yes.
Council member Gardner.
Yes.
Council member Mazzoni.
Yes.
Council member Saunders.
Yes.
Council member Mosley.
Yes.
Ordinance 1038 passes. We will move on to the third reading of ordinance 1039, amendment to zoning map. Madam City Clerk Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1039, an ordinance amending the Mammell zoning map due to annexation and for other purposes.
This is the zoning amendment to accompany the land use plan from the prior ordinance and the annexation from two ordinances ago. If there's no discussion, I'd entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1039.
So moved.
I've got a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Council member Mosley.
Yes.
Council member Saunders.
Yes.
Council member Mazzoni.
Yes.
Council member Gardner.
Yes.
Council member Williams.
Yes.
Council member Tierney.
Yes.
Council member Shin.
Yes.
Council member Holt.
Yes.
Thank you, 1039 pass.
Thank you, ordinance 1039 passes. Thank you, ordinance 1039 passes. With that, we will move on to the second reading of ordinance 1044, amendment to land use plan and map. Madam City Clerk?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Monmouth, County of Palasque, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1044, an ordinance amending the Monmouth Land Use Plan and Map and for other purposes.
All right. Councilmember Mazzoni?
Yeah, I think on this one, we have to do a lot of, Mr. Williams hit a lot of points today, that we have, we don't have the money to pay all of our employees what they deserve. Part of that is for the last 10 years, we keep increasing our residential without the commercial. Here's a track that is commercial, and once again, we're looking at zoning that residential. The last 10 years of audits has shown us that residential increases expenses greater than the revenue that comes in. This one's going to be as well because you're going to need more first responders out there due to the nature of the building. We need to start doing that. Our sales tax revenue is up, but if you look at the whole Little Rock, North Little Rock area, a lot of that is based on the government transfers people receive. For the whole month of 20, year of 2020, almost a quarter of per capita revenue came from government relief and spiked in March of this year at almost 30%. Everyone's sale, your personal savings rate almost doubled. Now everything's coming down to where our employment numbers across the state are less than it was in January of 2019, which means our annual revenue for homes is going to go down, which means we cannot keep, we cannot expect the revenues that we've had this year to continue. So we need to make some long-term plans and prepare for that, or as we said, if we start losing more police and long-term, we don't have the funds to keep up with increased costs, we will be in trouble.
Thank you, Councilmember Mazzoni. Is there any additional discussion? Is sound back on? Okay. We received comments on Facebook that the sound was not working. It looks like it's back on. Councilmember Mazzoni, Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, some good points there by Mr. Mazzoni. Are you going to be voting no? I don't know if you're ready to reveal that or not, but I'd be curious about that. I agree with you on the commercial very much. The main reason I would be tempted to vote yes on this is just because it will not be adding, I don't think, any traffic problems, but that would be the upside. But the downside, again, would be more commercial out of the deal. Thank you.
I neglected to say this, but we do have representatives from the applicant here if there are any questions for them. Councilmember Shin, or if y'all wanted to add anything?
I have a question for them. I was wondering an estimate on how many jobs will be provided?
Good evening. Scott Almond with SWD Architects. To answer the question is, they generally create about 35 full-time positions, and
All right. If there's no further discussion, this will be on third reading at the next council meeting. Next order of business is the second reading of ordinance 1045, amendment to zoning map. Madam City Clerk?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Monmouth, County of Palasque, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1045, an ordinance amending the Monmouth zoning map and for other purposes.
All right, this is the zoning map amendment tied to the previous ordinance. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, it'll be on third reading at the next city council meeting. Next order of business is the second reading of ordinance 1043, adopting provisions for sick leave accrual. Madam City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Monmouth, Palasque County, Arkansas, ordinance number 1043, an ordinance of the City of Monmouth, Arkansas, adopting provisions for the police officer's sick leave accruals and for other purposes.
All right, just as a refresher, this is the provisions increasing the amount of sick leave that can be accrued and the rate at which it accrues for our law enforcement officers. If there's no discussion, this will be on third reading at the next council meeting. All right, we'll move on to new business. First item of new business is resolution 2021-27, a resolution certifying the amount of liens.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Monmouth, County of Palasque, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled resolution number 2021-27, a resolution approving and certifying the amount of liens to be filed with the Palasque County Tax Collector against certain real property in the City of Monmouth, Arkansas, as a result of grasscutting expenses and abatement of the other nuisances and for other purposes.
All right, we've seen this before. This is abatement of property and attaching a lien. Is there any questions, comments, discussion? Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, sir. I wonder if I could ask a few questions of the code enforcement supervisor?
Certainly. Would that be Mr. Carter? Come on down.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. My wife and I do some walking, and a lot of times we walk that circle, and I had noticed that house over the last probably year and felt like, looked like something was going on there that didn't look like it was occupied and some of the vegetation was a little longer than most of the neighbors and that sort of thing. I was wondering if you could give us some details about that and any pictures you might have?
I assumed you had pictures in your packet?
Didn't have any pictures.
So this is not the first time this property's been cut and clean. It is the second year that we've done so. The owner was a, is a decedent and no heirs. And we tried to keep an eye on it, but you know, some neighbors tend to mow the front yard, it seemed like.
Yeah.
And we don't catch on to the backyard quite as much, so it is on our radar now. But last year, we spent a little bit less money. This year, we had a little tough time trying to find somebody willing to do the work. So it was a little more expensive by the time they got to it.
Was it mainly problems in the backyard?
Yes, sir. Let me show you the pictures.
Because the front yard, I mean, it looked like it needed to be mowed.
Ask those.
Oh, that's, that's quite interesting.
This property is actually certified to the state, the land commissioner, and its back taxes are over $18,000. I would assume that it would go up for auction this next year. Typically, they put these things up. This is not something unusual in cities like Little Rock, where I've worked in the past, and I would submit 30 of these in a month, not just one a year. So it's uncommon here in Monmouth for a property to be unoccupied for such a long time because there's no mortgage, so you don't have a property preservation company coming in to take care of those issues. And normally, we do.
Okay. And the amount, the amount of the, what you're filing, the $500, is that, is that based on what you had to pay somebody to do the work or city workers or who?
We paid an outside source, $500 plus the extra fees for mailing and the, for filing the liens eventually with the Palasque County.
Okay.
So those are all expenses incurred.
All right.
Added into the.
All right. And the person is deceased and was there, nobody responded to your request for payment or anything?
The first year, yes, but it was his father, and he has died himself. So it is, there's no estate, so I don't know where it's going to go from this point on. But usually what will happen with a property of this, I mean, it's a nice piece of property. It has an indoor pool. My friends used to own this house before this gentleman did, but, so I know it's a very nice property. Usually someone will pick this up for those taxes. They'll have to quiet the title. That takes a little bit of time, of course, but once someone does that, becomes a new owner, I think we'll have no problems with it going forwards.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Gardner?
Motion to approve resolution 2021-27.
Second.
I've got a motion, second, to approve resolution 2021-27. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. The next order of business is resolution 2021-28, approving a crisis intervention training agreement. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Monmouth, County of Palasque, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled resolution number 2021-28, approving an agreement regarding a grant for crisis intervention training incentives between the City of Monmouth and Palasque County, Arkansas.
All right, this stems from Palasque County and their efforts to try and increase the amount of police officers that are certified with the crisis stabilization unit, and therefore, they're offering $1,000 to certified police officers to be able to, to pay them for being certified. We currently have four that are fully certified, and then we're going to work and try and get some more police officers fully certified. And we have one year from the, from now, basically, to get them fully certified. It's 40 hours of training. For those that don't know, the crisis intervention, crisis stabilization unit is designed to handle individuals that maybe don't need to be locked up but need mental health intervention. And so it's designed for a place you can take people instead of jail for that. Currently, that's, service is being provided by the county for free, and they're just trying to make sure as many officers as possible are trained on how to identify who should go in, who should go to jail, when those situations arise, to try and get people in the right place, because we know that jails are overly full of individuals that are going through a mental health crisis of some form or other. So I'll go ahead and open this up to discussion. If there is none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2021-28.
So moved.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. The next order of business is the first reading of ordinance 1046, amending city code section Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Monmouth, County of Palasque, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1046, an ordinance amending section 94-353 of the Monmouth City Code to change multifamily residential uses as permitted in the R3 district from a permitted use in a C2 district to a conditional use in a C2 district and for other purposes.
Thank you. So we've discussed this, we've discussed this before. This is the ordinance that makes R3 a conditional use in C2 zoning? Excuse me, y'all may recall, we have, we do have a rezoning request tabled until next month where this may be at issue. So we drafted this, sent it through the planning commission, and here we are. I'd be happy to answer any questions if any are out there. If not, this will be on second reading at the next city council meeting. All right, we'll move on to mayor's comments, of which I surprisingly have none. So we'll hit council member comments. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, sir. Are we, is, I know under the COVID, there was an emergency declaration of some kind made by the governor that allowed us to go to the hybrid meetings where we didn't all have to be here in person. Did they, it seemed like they reinstated that emergency thing. Is it possible for us to go, to do a hybrid meeting?
If we're still, I know the, the original emergency declaration expired for quite some time. I know one was recently put out. I'm not sure if it's still in existence or not. If it is, then if the council wants to, we can go back to hybrid meetings.
Okay. I thought we might consider that if we have council members that are unvaccinated or uncomfortable with the COVID or whatever. I personally will, will show up here as long as I've got, as long as I'm vaccinated properly and haven't gone beyond the good period of time, because I'm not supposed to catch the thing. But if somebody else would be, is uncomfortable or feels like they would like to do the hybrid thing, I would support that. You just miss my fan, don't you?
Could you say that into your microphone, please? Councilmember Saunders? I think there was a reference about missing his ceiling fan. Thank you. If that's something the council wanted to do, then assuming the governor's emergency declaration is still in effect, we could do.
I'll bring that up again next time and just see if somebody's got something to add to that, because I had forgotten that, I think that that was reinstated possibly. Thank you.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. For health reasons, I would like, if we can reinstate it, I would like to see it reinstated. I haven't taken the vaccination and I will not take it under doctor's orders. But I, those that know me know that I'm missing a lung from lung cancer, so I'm at high risk anyway. So if we can reinstate it, I would like to see us reinstated.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say that the Councilmember Mosley is correct. The governor signed a new one in July, and it runs through the end of September. It's only extended for 60 days at a time. And so as ordinance 1,000 reads, I think anytime we're under a public health emergency, if that's correct, then we could have those hybrid meetings. So I don't, I don't see any reason why a member could not participate in that, since, of course, with the legislature, I think if the governor goes beyond issuing more emergency orders, the legislature has a chance to review those and offer their input. So who knows what they'll do with that. But as long as there's an emergency order in effect, the law's the law in the city, and we can have virtual meetings.
And you're saying we don't even really need to vote on it?
I, it'd be up to whatever ordinance 1,000 says, and I'll go with whatever the city attorney deems appropriate for that.
Yeah, well, so it doesn't automatically go into effect just because the governor or mayor declared an emergency, but if the council wants to, we don't need a motion. I don't know if anyone has any trepidations about doing that or not? Is there any objections to going back to hybrid? Madam City Clerk?
I think we would just need to monitor, you know, and it's not something that, I didn't know about this until tonight, so I didn't review ordinance 1,000 or the governor's emergency orders, but we would just need to monitor whether we are currently under state of emergency. So if that's accurate and we, the state of emergency has expired at the end of this month, then for next month, we would either need to amend the ordinance in some manner or we would need to, I mean, I think it's pretty likely that the state of emergency could be extended again, but we would just need to monitor that to make sure that we're in compliance with those terms of our ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmember Tierney?
I will be attending all the meetings regardless of how we do it, but I am in full support of doing a hybrid if it assists anybody in any way.
I agree.
Okay, so what I'll, what we'll plan on doing then is, assuming there is an active declaration at the next city council meeting, we'll move to hybrid. If there's not an active declaration, we'll meet here. We'll send out additional information in the interim as we know it. I think it's September 27th that the, we should know more, so that'd give us a week of notice.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any additional council member comments? Is there any additional council member comments? Seeing none, Madam City Attorney?
I'm sorry. I was looking at the code on that subject. I did want to just bring up real quickly the opioid litigation. We got some information on that today from the municipal league. There's been opioid litigation ongoing for a good period of time, and it looks like they're getting close to a settlement that 42 states have agreed to participate in, one of those being Arkansas. So, we'll be getting some more information on those terms, and we'll have to have a decision about whether we want to sign on to that by January 2nd of next year. It is supported by the Attorney General for Arkansas as well as the municipal league, so I can't think of really any reason why we would not be likely to sign on to that, but I wanted to bring it up so that when we, you know, bring it to the council for your approval, it won't be any type of surprise, and you'll have an opportunity beforehand to ask questions if you would like to.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
No comments.
With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a motion. Do I hear a second? I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adjourning, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.